Hey folks, and this time today we're going to play a bit more of the Gilders' Nonsense by 4X Studio. And in our last episode we managed to size 3 seats in the council and to marry my son Vaisa. So we're going to try to keep climbing into the council. And we'll see if we can also get our business to work a bit better, maybe there is a few things to tweak here. So let's just resume normal speed and let's see what we can do. I've got my son which is walking on the carpentry thing. He's trying to gather, where is he? To gather mushrooms. Alright, here it is. It is not bad because I think we need a mushroom actually, if we want to be able to produce more things. It's quite far from the city though, it can be dangerous. I might want to assign somebody to protect my son because if I was to be attacked out there, there might not be any kind of guard to protect me and he's not really good at it. So what we should also do is to check what kind of weapon we've got. Because my son has basically nothing, so it's probably a bad idea. I should just try to get him to get a knife. But what I should probably do is to buy a bunch of knives and give them to my employees. As it has been suggested into the comment of the previous, no not the previous but the episode before. So let's just try to see how many we've got here. We've got plenty of little dagger. Where are these things coming from? I believe these are produced in Macon because there is so many. But let's see, maybe there is more which is produced in these forge. So where was it? So the goldsmithery, I'm pretty sure it's not here. We've got probably a forge somewhere. Should probably just take a look at the map to be more obvious, but maybe it's not too far. See if guilds, oh it is going to be too far off the city. And these kind of shops tend to be a bit more entitled cities. Tend to reach... Ah, we'll just find it out, we'll just find out later on. It might not be too far. Anyway, maybe I will need to add another shop to our... What's going on here? Let's take a look and we have just one character which is ill or two, just one. So let's take a look, he is suffering from tooth rot. I think I might be able to fix that. I just first buy the knife. It is always useful here. You don't have anything to protect me, no I don't. And do I have more people? No. Let's just send him to get fixed in my hospital. Alright, and where am I? Just over there. So I could, let's see. I don't have so many employees which are in danger, frankly the city is quite safe. But I could give some knives to the people which are working the carpentry. And maybe the orc artist, so if we were to be attacked we would be able to actually hit. But generally speaking, my employees are not going to fight back. They are going to flee and run and scream and stuff. So I don't think they're going to be very efficient. Let's see. You know what, we're going to sell a cart. Just give me a little bit of perfume first. Then I might want to send my character to the church so he can begin a sermon. Alright, let's do that. Is my son fixed? Not yet, but he should be soon. Let's just a little bit... I might want to do something as well. I think I should assign residence to my son in this house here. And he should have a kid as well. Okay, I'll just give a sermon here. And we're going to praise somebody, let's just praise somebody from the council. We're going to praise maybe the sovereign, Michel Bourget, which is a friend. Alright, so we could maybe manage to climb a bit higher into the ladder. Let's take a look. What should I... Ah, I'm already trying to put Edana instead of the chief magistrate, Christophe de Stade, which is good for us. We've got people which are going to try to... What? No, it is already, yes, he's running because he's being challenged, so he's still there. And Arnold de Stade, so she's going to get the support of her probably father or husband here. But I should have the support maybe of the sovereign and the marshal and maybe the bishop. So we should be fine if they are to actually vote. Might want to check that. So council meeting, so I believe all these guys should be voting. So Christophe de Stade is going to be an opponent. And Arnold is the one, yes. Okay, so I've got Pascal Calibri and Michel Bourget on my side. Should be fine. There is a fire, hopefully it's not in my location. So I'm already doing this, let's just see if my... Oh, Kazar, producing poetry. Alright. Where is my wife? She is at home, I believe. Yes, she is. So she's losing a bit of time, I'm going to try to maybe try to go with diplomatic relation with people. Let's take a look. So council meeting, do we have many friends? Yes, we do. Let's just check, do we have people who could maybe become friends with? We've got maybe Sardinu from Lion or Startig. Probably more family we could try to be friends with. Let's take a look. Let's try to go peaceful with the Sardinu here. We're going to go and give him an non-aggression pact. It might be sufficient for now. I don't really have enough relationship to go for more, I think. Meanwhile, I think I should ask her to train, as she's not doing anything right now. Even though she probably have enough experience to do plenty of things and she's almost maxed out. So let's go for a bit more charisma. I should just check the other character as well. Okay, we've got a bit here. So maybe a little bit more martial arts, our constitution. Okay, we'll just go with these to survive a bit longer. And I was about to ask him to get a kid. Oh, he was not fixed. And do we have, okay, pain medication? I should have some of these, I think. Just check. I do have some, so I will need to ask him to go back to the hospital and get cured. This is mine, nope. I think it is. Let's pause for a sec. This cart is mine and I want probably to just buy a bunch of... Let's just send it back here. Let's just send. I'm going to buy a bunch of knives from my employees here. Alright, let's just pause this thing for a sec. So this one, men in green, I think it is orc artist. Oh, it is a woodcutter. So we're going to buy, no, not that many. We're going to go with 3, I think, should be more than enough. And we're going to send it back, costing quite a bit. Oh, my money has been increased quite a bit also. So let's just go back to the woodcutter, we're going to unload and return. Or maybe just unload would have been sufficient. Just unload. Do we have the space? Yes, we do. Okay, let's just check the orc artist now. This orc artist has plenty of... I might want to just go and sell stuff as I'm going there. We're going to go and buy a bit of, and sell a bit of these fruits. So let's just take this cart, we're going to send it. So let's say, we're going to send it to the market of Macon. We're going to go with just unload. We'll put a few knives into this cart and we'll come back. I've got still 2 people which are working here. Both are working on the honey. I should just hire a bit more and work on more things. Alright, we could even go for more. Alright, so where is my cart? It's just over there, I think, yes it is. Okay, so my kid here is just idling at home, just going to bring him back to the hospital. And oh, it is my cart, isn't it? Let's take a look. Oh no, it is the woodcutter. So I'm waiting for another one. The money is just getting quickly and I'm going to try to raid my house quite quickly. And I should just try to go for a better title. So where is my kid? How was that? Okay, let's just ask him to go and get fixed. I think there might be a bunch of people in there already, so it's going to take a while. Who's that? Oh, Sheila Gaiden. Good to know. And there is not so much people here. It should be quick. Okay, I'm going to send my wife to the council palace, we're going to try to get a better title. Meanwhile, I should have, where is my cart? It might be that one? I think it is the one I was... Okay, let's just bring it back here. Just send. There's another one which is coming here. Okay. Alright, let's just buy a bunch of knives, I think I should just go for 5. It is quite expensive. Alright. Good, and now I should be going back to the orc artist and it's going to give us a bit... Of time to see things coming? Where is the cart going? Do I still have the cart in hand? I don't think so. Let's take a look. Here it is. Come on, I just want to click on the thing. Okay, no, it's not working. It's coming back home, good. Hope it's not going to steal the knives. Good, let's try again. So as I was saying... Ah, come on, I think I misclicked again. Oh, it's coming back, so we don't really care. Anyway, Edana should be there already. Let's ask to go for a new title. No, 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 don't charge anybody. Let's just trade the title. It should be something like 10,000 or 15,000, I should be able to afford it. Come on, buddy. He's not really in a hurry. Ah, of course, let's go for that. Okay. Was she not a citizen? Yeah, she was a citizen already. Strange. We'll need to check that later on. We should be notified anyway. Okay, so I was in need of checking my employees. So we've got her over there. We need to be in court if we want to defend our title. It's never a good thing to not be there. Okay, I'll just try to bring all my people a bit closer. Alright, are they close enough? There is a bunch which are. Okay, one knife over there. Alright, can I get more people? Okay, I feel like they're not listening. Oh, that guy here. Oh, come on buddy, don't leave that fast. And let's see, I've got all of them. Okay, let's just get closer, we're going to try to keep them close enough. Maybe over there? Okay, I just bring them all here, so they're going to follow the building when they're going to leave. Hurry, okay, let's just, nope. Yes. Come on, are they not too far? They're too far. Oh, come on buddies. I think Felicia has already a dagger. Yes, she has. These 2 here, they are not willing to listen, are they? Okay, let's try again. So I need, oh, there is 5, so I don't even have enough daggers. So let's just take a look. Peter, come here. Oh, wait a sec, I've got somebody which is close enough. I should just wait for them to come to drop their thing. And put it in the hand by force. Okay, we'll just see about that later on. I'm going to check if the orc artist is easier to do, because these guys are not moving so much. Come on buddies. Is there more? Bunch of guards, we've got a bunch of soldiers. Okay, are we too far? I think we might be. They're not willing to... Okay, maybe if I just do that, it might be good. Let's take a look. Yes, it is a bit better. I just drop this thing into the storage. Let's give them all a little bit of defensive tools. Alright, yeah, I should just do the same with the other one, I should just click on the... On the carpentry of there and I should just be able to do what I need. Let's see, so they've got now dagger, all of them. Perfect. And it is almost time to go and check what's happening in court. But we're going to try to go and ask them to do what I'm asking. It's not complicated, I just want them to be close enough so I can just give them a dagger. Alright, good. Oh, wait a sec, another one. Wait, 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 wait. Yes, good. I think the dagger is gone, so it should be fine. Why are they... They cannot produce poem. Why is there so many poems here? I think it might be because of Vaisa. Anyway, let's just go back to the hall. Got probably things to do here. Just check assembly hall entrance. I want to go to the assembly hall. And I need to check if I've got all my people over there, because these 3 are of titles, so they should be there. What is that noise? It might be a bug. So I've got 3 of my own over there, so all good. And what we should do is try to get better with other people. So let's just try to, I could try to begin to convert them here maybe. Could be something I could do, but it might be a bit too slow. So we're going to try to compliment somebody. And it would be better if it was somebody which is powerful. Could just compliment somebody else, I'll just compliment... The Calibri as well. I just asked Vaisa to do pretty much the same with... With Victoire. Alright. We're almost there, so they just give us a little boost in case. And I'm going to ask, okay, we need to use perfume, but... Okay, let's see, let's just pause again for a sec. Let's just take a look, I've got more than enough perfume here. What is that noise? And let's just use a bit of perfume. I just take a look, I should have probably more perfume over there. And I could use it on Vaisa as well. Just going to give us a little bit of a boost again. This is very handy. Just go that way, get a bunch of extra points over there. Okay, good. The council is going to begin and hopefully we won't get thrown out. Okay, everybody seems to be there, yes, everybody's there. Let's see, we're getting closer to the most important office, so we should be able to get to the point quite quickly. So who's trying to get the title of the Bourget? So we've got Michel Bourget, Thomas Alagret and Victor Calibri. They are all voting for Michel Bourget and we're going to do the same, I believe. It's not the best way to deal with that. Okay, let's see. They are trying to strengthen each other. We're going to obviously vote for Michel. But maybe I could have one of mine voting for Victoire to keep it... So he's going to vote for Victoire here. Alright, but I'm going to vote for Michel. And Edana might be voting for Michel as well. So we gain a bit of reputation, I believe, with Victoire and we don't lose any with Michel. Okay, so which one do we want to go for? So I'm going for Christophe de Stade. Oh, come on, she's going to vote for him? Why would she? It is not what I was expecting. Okay, I just try to see what I can do to get her. So we're going to flatter. I'm going to compliment, we don't care, going to bribe her. I don't have enough money and I cannot do much, so I'm going to trust, try to go with that. Nah, too late. We won't be able to get that office today. Not cool. We'll try again tomorrow. I believe I'm part of their family though, so she should be a bit... Okay, so do I have a post to keep here? We've got Maurice Bourget, Victor Calibri, they're trying to get for a better office. And let's see. I might want to vote for the Calibri instead now. Maurice Bourget, she's voting for her husband. Oh, nice. I did not think about any kind of name, but we'll see. I still need to keep my office, just a bit of bit. Hopefully we won't get out of our office dungeon master, I think I've got one already. So we are all voting for her, so it's all good. I don't want to threaten the council, it's pointless. This is not how I do things. Okay, so I might be able to vote and it should done well. Nice. Okay, so mother is going to vote for the son of course. And everybody, okay, all good. So this seat is safe. Let's go for the next one. And what is this one here about? So who do I want to vote for? I might want to vote for Henriette Gaiden. I think it is the best. Not going to put the bandit in place. Richard Barato is the one which is actually plundering the people on the road. I'm not going to put him into the council, it's a very bad idea. Okay, so we're going to go for Henriette Gaiden. Hopefully it will be a support. She's quite happy. Okay, let's just keep going, we've got I think one more seat to defend maybe? Kirshana, not really. So who do we have here? Uh, so Gaiden, Michel Gaiden, Thalia Baraton. I don't really know who I'm going to vote for. I think I'm going to vote for Michel. I've got a much better reputation with her. Wait, what's happening here? Okay, it's the end of the day, the council is a bit longer. So we're going to vote for Michel. And again, Michel. Alright. And it is Michel then, so we are a bit stronger than the sovereign if we are banding together. I'll be sorry. I'm not sure this is the right way to... Nah. Okay, so it is done for today's station. We'll try to progress a bit more tomorrow. We've been able to retain our office, which is good, but it is not sufficient enough. And I've got new privilege, but I failed at noticing this. So I'm now a free citizen, it is a bit better. So I should have maybe a few new, let's take a look, I'm pretty sure I cannot see it here. But if I had read the little panel on the left, I could have known that I was able to do more things. Maybe I've got more business slot or maybe I've got other things. Okay, so we're going to try again to go against Christophe de Stade here. And what I might want to do is to try to go against Pascal Calibri and try to climb the ladder here. I think I want to do that. Let's just ask my son to do it as well. Apply for an office, here we go. And for the office of bishop, we'll see if they prefer the Calibri or us. Meanwhile, let's just send my character back to the church and see if we can... Oh, 50. It's a big one. Let's take a look. I think I might want to use a bit of perfume to make this sermon more efficient. Alright, almost done. I could try to, I could just try to do this a little bit before I do anything else. Try to convert a bit more people so we can actually bring more to the sermon. It is a bit night right now, but I might, here are a few people here. Meanwhile, let's take a look, my son is not doing anything, which is not good. So let's just take a look, he was working at the woodcutter hut. Let's just have him produce a little bit of charcoal or mushrooms. Let's just go for charcoal here. Alright, and how much did it cost to go for a much bigger house? Only 10,000? It seems not to be that much. Wait a sec, it is my house, so both of these are... No, there is a gabled house and a regular house, so we're going to go for this one. 10,000, let's go for it. Okay, meanwhile, I've got Edana which is not doing anything. Um, let's see. Flattering people, I'm going to send her back to the alchemist so I can get a bit of perfume. I should maybe get it from home, I don't really need to keep so much at home. I will get plundered and I will just be sorry. Meanwhile, let's see, it is, okay, it's feeling a bit. I could ask them to just sell more. It is at a loss because I'm not getting so much money out of it, but still. And let's take a look here. We got zero wood. We're not very efficient here. I don't know why. We should be in automated mode, yes. Employee, yes, let's just go for automatics, maybe they're going to feel if there is trouble here. But I think we've got the max amount of employees here, should maybe do the same here. Alright, I don't think they can actually fire anybody, so it's all good. Alright, let's see, am I available now? Am I still trying to convince people? Oh, I'm still convincing people, good. Oh, wait, I don't want to bring her here, I want to keep her inside. Get a bunch of perfume. Is she inside? Yes, she is. So we're going to go for maybe 5, going to give us a bit of time. And let's take a look, the family is getting bigger. And let's see. If I take a look at the council meeting, I should be able to see the Bourget family. And I've got already one member of the Bourget family which is one of mine now. I've got also one which is part of the Calibri family here, so we've got a link together. And I've got, maybe I could marry some of mine to the Gaiden family at some point. I don't know, we'll need to see that. Okay, let's see. How much perfume do I have got, do I have here? Not so many. I've got all the necessary things. But I don't have so many things to pick up here. I'm almost done with that. So when I'm going to be done, I will try to make a sermon, an efficient one. This seems to be pretty happy. Okay, so I'm done with that. Let's go back to the church. Alright, done. Or almost. Okay, I'm back in there. I cannot do sermon yet. Okay, so we'll just need to wait. What kind of money can I give them to make them happier? Don't want to pay too much though. Buddy, I'm trying to pay a bonus. Why are you not reacting? Maybe because there is nobody here for now. Try again. Not working. Okay, we'll just do that later on. And I did not pay attention to the tavern for a bit. Uh, you know what? I might want to try to actually, um... Uh... Take advantage of our tavern to convince somebody to be friendlier with us. I could just, um, ask... No, she's not going to be, uh, willing to do so. Strange. Uh, no, it's not strange. We were just going too, too slowly? Not true. What's happening here? Who's that? Capas in Bussero? Uh... Don't really care. She's fleeing, kind of. Oh, sermon is ready. Good. Oh, it's too early? Okay, it's too early. I'm going to speed up a bit, that's all. Okay, uh, twenty more minutes. And we should be able to do it now. Good. Okay, I need that guy. Uh, let's get out of here. We're going to... Do that. Again, there is a lot of people around. I'm going to try to be, uh, efficient with that. And what I should do, I could just try to go and get one more of my guys to get, uh, more pillers in. They'll go back to rock and normally later on, so I'm going to ask them to just do the best they can to bring more people for my sermon here. And I should also send one, uh, close to the, um... To the council palace here. Because it's always good to have a few, uh, councilor of the same face. Oh, Michel Bourget, she's, she's a sovereign, this is who I'm looking for. And I might want to bring my wife there. So she can, maybe I could just give them a gift. Let's just take a look at what I can get here. She has the max charisma, or almost, so we should be fine. But she needs a bit more rhetoric though. Okay, good. Do I need to... Oh, yes, I might be, no, I'm not able to do this. Hmm, arcane knowledge could be useful, bargaining also. I would prefer to save a bit, uh, for the rhetoric. Oh, nice. And, let's see, more charisma, obviously useful. And, let's see. Is Edanna, uh, a hush here? So let's just take a look at what we can get to, uh, give us a gift here. Let's take a look to my beach, uh... I could go for a bit of poetry. It's always useful. I could give them some kind of ring or something. I do not have so much good rings here. Okay, we'll try to go with this one. And I could... No, I do not have anything else to use right now. Okay, so let's just, uh, give us a little boost with, uh, the perfume. Alright. And I think I might want to, uh, find... A sovereign back because she might not be, uh, in the church anymore. Yes, she is. Oh, could I just, um, yeah, ambush around here? Kind of. Hmm, may I read poetry to somebody in there? No, only men, okay. I'm not going to walk then. I might want to just try to get, give a gift. Only men are, as well, not cool. Uh, okay, just attend to church for a bit. This person, evil? That's not, that's right. Okay, there is an issue here. Um, maybe she's not so evil, so she's going... If, I think if she, if she stayed a bit at church, she might redeem her reputation. Guild fame is increasing as well here. I should just send my son back here as well. Right, else, uh... Oh, my, because I'm doing the sermon, but I'm not attending. Shady? Come on, guys, I, I'm the priest here. Okay. Maybe I should just attend to my own... Oh, Chandler, there he is. Got my whole family here. Look at that, there is Blanche over there. We've got Varan here. We've got, uh, Alana here. Everybody's here. We are just lacking Versa and I think the whole church will be filled with my family. If it is to collapse, we are all dead. It's, it's not going to collapse anyway. Okay, but, uh, I'm going to try to, uh, maybe compliment the sovereign here. While I'll do that, I'll ask Edanna... Okay, everybody's going outside. Let's go outside. I'm going to pick up... Whatever I've got, uh, on Edanna and give it to Versa so you can give it to the sovereign. It is probably the best way for us to make a bunch of gifts and stuff. Uh, they might not be too far now. They are too far, okay. I'll just get a bit closer then. Okay, should be close enough. So Versa is just a bit, let's give it, uh, a ring. A bit of poetry. Alright. And I just try to, uh, keep influencing the council a bit better. Okay, so Versa, yeah, ready to give. Uh, let's say you are going to gift the sovereign, a ring? Alright, a ring. Wait, don't leave. And... Maybe I should just give him a bit of perfume? He's not... Nah, he's not using any right now. Where is she? I'm not going to catch her, am I? Yes, I am. She's currently waiting. The sound is bugging again, I'm sorry about that. Okay, he is still following. Wait a sec, I'm just going to ask her to follow for a sec. But I think she's probably just busy. Uh, let's take a look. Gift, where is she? Don't see her anymore. There is too many people, I cannot... Okay, all good. Oh, come on, buddy! Uh... Okay, I could maybe try something better. Michel Bourget. Let's see, I probably cannot bribe her, but I might want to try. I don't have enough money. Oh, she's asking for a lot then. Okay, let's try to go for one more of this. I'm trying to redeem things. Seems that the ring was a bit crappy. And Versa, I think so. You go right away. Edanna, you go right away. And Versa, it should be available soon. And I kind of forgot to run for... Okay, let's just hurry over there. Did I actually try to go for it? Yes, I did. Yes, I forgot about it, but I did. There's a bunch of people which are going to try to steal my office here. Hopefully, they won't manage to do so. And my house is not yet upgraded. I should just try to go and upgrade this one as well, maybe. How much? Oh, it's not that much. Let's go for it. Okay, so they should be soon indoor. I'm going to wait for them to arrive. Oh, wait, I should maybe try to take a look. Emetting shiddle, uh, cashbook. Um, laos. Nah. I was looking for, uh, something a bit more efficient, uh, to see how many, um, people of each face there is. Okay, buddy, uh, you need to, uh, trade some perfume with your mother so you can just use this. Come on! Where is Edanna? She should be here now. Oh, here she is. I don't want to trade with these guys, I want to trade with my son. Okay, so let's just use this. And I cannot use it right away, but I, I will be able to. Let's do the same here. Let's just, uh, try to use the charisma of my character to, uh, seduce a bit more the people of the Bourget dynasty so they can maybe vote for me. I'm going to ask Edanna to do the same with, uh, with, uh, Maurice? Nah, I don't think it's Maurice. Maurice is Maurice Calibri, so it's probably not going to happen. And... Oh, uh, no, it's Maurice Bourget, so it is... Oh, it is Pascal, okay, my mistake. Okay, let's go with that, uh... Let's take a look. I do not have any, uh, no, I can't do anything here. I could maybe try to... Nope, there is nothing here. Maybe the poetry could be useful on the sovereign, if it is possible. She's not too far. I hope it's not going to decrease our relationship with the Bourget family though. Because it is not as good. Oh, it worked! Nice! I'm surprised. Okay, let's see, maybe more constitution could be useful, I don't want to die right away. Let's take a look. Okay, nobody can actually level up yet. Uh, it is probably time to go for the council, so let's just try to, to make it happen. We need to keep these seats if we want to climb higher. And we're going to try to remove Maurice Bourget. So it's going to be an interesting session. So sovereign, of course. It's a wonderful post of sovereign. So Thomas Alagueres is trying to come back, but he won't. Okay, she's a bit crazy. So I never tried to bribe you too much. I'm quite interested to see how these AI are going to work, uh, in the next, uh, episode in, in The Guild 3. It's going to be very, very interesting. Because there is, uh, eleven years between these, uh, two opuses and it is going to pretty change everything. There is not the same amount of limitation here. And these, these characters were already pretty interesting, even though I'm pretty sure they are cheating sometime. Okay, let's see, so we need to move, to remove Christophe Thestar. Oh, come on! Is... What's happening between these two? We could just prevent him from coming. Okay, let's try to, to convince, uh, I could, oh, I could go with... Okay, let's try to flatter her. Okay, it's not going to happen. Um, I followed gunlet. Alright. She might be walking. Didn't she? Ah, she's not going to change her mind. Nah, she's not. Okay, the post of marshal. We've got still, uh... Uh, Victor Calibri, Maurice Bourget. Who do I vote for? I think I'm going to vote for Calibri because Maurice is going to be trouble. I cannot vote, so it's not going to be possible. Come on! I just hurry a bit. Maurice Bourget, of course, she's voting for Maurice. So what office are we going for? Oh! Uh... Okay, I'm safe, I think. There is three vote for me already. I don't want to threaten anybody. Okay, wait a sec. Uh, just pause the game for a sec. We're going to try to whatever we can. I'm going to use a bit of perfume, I cannot. Okay, we're going to try to, uh, let's see, who do we have? Uh, Michel, Christophe Thestar and Maurice Bourget. Let's just try to... To get on the good side of Maurice. Alright, a bit more. And I just, I can, I still cannot use this perfume anymore. I should just try to see if I can bribe the mayor again? Don't, probably don't have enough money though. Nah. How much does she want? Okay, so we are fine here. Okay, there is, uh, still one more, uh, office I need to try to sign, the bishop's office. With a bit of luck, uh, the sovereign is going to vote for, for me. Nice, it's working. We're voting for Pascal, Christophe Thestar, so basically, the Calibri are friendlier with the Thestar and with us. Okay, wait a sec. Uh, let's try to, uh, get on the good side of... Okay, I think I do not have the right character in hand. Can I? Oh, there we go. Uh, nope, no, I need to go with... I cannot do anything with Edanna either. Okay, why can I not change character? Okay, I can change character. I just failed to do so, but, okay, it's fine. Pascal Calibri. What? Oh, come on, I've been... Not cool. I did not pay attention and they managed to, uh, s... To exchange money and compliment while I was just failing around. Okay, I need to be careful, yeah. Not going to threaten anybody. And it's true, kind of. Okay, so we are going to try to... Nice, but... Okay, so we should be fine. Of course, want to vote for me. So basically, we just remain, but we do not get anything else. Uh, should not have exited. Was a mistake. Okay, let's hurry. See who we can actually vote for. I do not want to threaten the council. But I want to keep my seat though. Again? Okay, let's hurry a bit. I'm going to vote for myself as well. Oh, something has exploded. Hopefully, it's not mine. Okay, lease master, let's hurry. I do really care for anything here? I don't think so. I'm just going to let them just do their stuff. So what do we have here? A poem, so the, the Gaiden are... Oh, I've been intimidated, not cool. Uh, so we're going to vote for, uh, let's see... Red guard, uh, come on, Gaiden. Stuff. Both. Let's get out of here. Okay, so we should be fine now, there is nothing else to do here. Let's just take a look. My house seems to be almost done. Alright. Win more money if we want to be able to... Or I could just try to snatch the sovereign, so I would be able to, uh, maybe get a better seat. Because the biggest, uh, issue for me is the sovereign, which is supposed to be one of my ally. We are almost the same family. But she's still only... Uh, not really. Don't care about two thousand. Okay, what do we want to, uh, let's say, we're going to vote for Michel Gaiden. Again. I don't really care about these two seeds. And she wants, oh, there is... Oh, we've been voting for Henriette and Michel. It might be dangerous to let them climb too much. And she wants, oh, there is, oh, we've been voting for Arriette and Michel. It might be dangerous to let them climb too much. Okay, we're going to try to size these seats again, so who do I want to try to put instead of the bishop? Uh. Vessa again. Let's try to apply for this post. I'm going to try to apply also For this post here. And then we'll try to uh apply. Uh, wait a sec. Uh, do I want to do that right away? I could just apply for this one, but uh, okay, let's try it. I would just keep uh Edana if I'm failing to climb higher. What I lack here is uh a civilian, so I could snatch somebody And prevent him from, you know, being there when it's going to be time to vote. Yet, I don't want them to accumulate too many proofs against me, or it would be trouble. We've been making a bit of XP and empathy. Can save a bit for rhetoric. Oh, nice. A bit more rhetoric here. And even more, yeah. Oh, nice, we've got a little trade with that. So what do we want to go for? Uh, Ironside Master of Mana. Um. Motivation artists. I think I'm going to go for uh Ironside. Good. Okay, let's see. What if, uh, let's say I was, I, I'm not sure I can do it, but I could use uh maybe my dungeon. I'm pretty sure I cannot accuse, uh, let's see, uh. I could try to break the wheel of somebody. But I could try to go for Kristoff Testard. Let's take a look. Uh, a brick will Nah, not going to walk. It's not what I'm looking for. And it's probably not going to work on somebody which has uh a much better uh rank than I do. Okay, let's go back to business, we've got things to do. Let's just not forget that we are also here to make a bit of money. So Let's uh begin. I've got no perfume. Let's go back home, get some. I should also bring Edana around here, we're going to try to ask Uh, Vessa to probably come back home as well to get a bit of perfume. And we need to uh replenish the supply at some point here. Alright, three over there. Let's just get out of here. I might want to, I could just walk a bit in the herbalist uh shop. Oh, we are already making a lot of perfume, so I don't really need to walk here. Good. So we're going to go back over there. Let's just give us a bit of perfume. Just a bit of bit. Alright, done. Just uh come here, we'll try to convince a bunch of people. Then I'm going to ask my son to pick up a bunch of perfume. Where is he? Over there. Just pick them all. Alright. And he will be back to walk as soon as possible. Okay, there you go, shock call. And is my house complete? Not yet, but soon. Okay, let's try to hurry with that, I'm going to also, oh, are we fighting already? It seems we are. Uh, are we not? Yes, I've got a knife. Uh, you know what, I should maybe try to bring a bunch of my guards over there. So she's not going to make it. There is plenty of enemies around. Okay, she might be making it. We are helping uh the Calibri, I think. Against the Gaiden, the yellow one. Okay, so we might want to fix Edana. She might need a bit of, of else. Okay, so I might want to also uh send my guard back. I should just hire a few more. It would be a lot more sensible. Alright. Let's hire two more. Okay, good. Should be a lot better. Let's bring these two around. And I could ask them to just snoop around. Ask question, question and stuff. Why am I not able to do it? Let's try to go with just one. One over there and one over there, so we can get a bunch of proofs on people. Meanwhile, Edana, you need to get fixed. I need to finish what I'm doing. Yes, I'm, I'm still doing that. I need to send a bunch of my priests to keep doing that. Not yet? Not possible yet? Come on, guys. What kind of proof? Uh, we'll need to check that. Not here, here. Book of Evidence, we've got a proof against, uh, oh, Pascal Calibri, what do you do? Sabotage. Oh, interesting. Uh, we've got only Strength of five and validity of three, three is not really much. Let's take a look on Arriette. Uh, eight and five, not bad. Taking civilian, eight and three, ah. We'll keep gathering these, it might be useful. Meanwhile, let's take a look. I could, I could hire a bit more guards, but not yet, this is a good idea for now. This house is going to be finished. Just take a look. And I should also go for a sermon here. Good. And let's see, we're going to also praise somebody, we're going to praise the sovereign, because this is what we do. Oh, the building is done, so we are going to get a bunch of options here. Let's take a look. We've got more storage, I don't really need these. I need maybe more workspace, I can hire a few more people. Uh, fire protection, useful. Treasure chest, uh, pretty useful. Uh, steel money box. What is this one about? I don't remember. You can store your money in this money box with An easy mind. Bergline, pal, there will not be able to open it or take it with them. Okay, handy. So I can store a bit of money for uh rough time in there, I believe. We've got also the dark corner, which is going to allow me to uh do even shadow with stuff around. Um. Empathy for all your employees increased by one. Okay, good. We've got uh guild minutes here. Nice, and do I want to go for one of these, the seal of the patron here? Crease uh by one, uh, by an initial point in every famous calculation. Alright, tradesman, uh scholars. I could go for this one. Okay, I could go for all of them, seemingly. It costs me a bit, but I hope to get a bit more reputation in that way. You're lucky, uh, spy have secured evidence. What kind of evidence? We'll know later on. Nice, two buildings upgraded, nice, very, very nice. And let's just take a look at the, take a look at the guild minute here. So I am the master of the Scholar Guild, seems. And what else we have here? The money box. Let's say I want to store a bit of money. Store money. Can I choose? Yes, I can choose. I'm going to store a bit that way. And let's close for now the box. We'll just take another look later on. I do not have enough money to uh store more for now. Okay, let's take a look at my art cards, there might be things we can do here. Probably just, oh, not so many. Let's just send these to cards. This market, this are going to give us a bit of money. Uh, you might want to just I could sell a bunch of perfume, it could help us to get a bit of money. Is it going to go by itself, or do I need to do it myself? It seems to be not doing it, so let's just unload and return. Let's make a bit of money. Oh, so many of these, let's just sell them all. It's not much, but it is better than nothing. Is it going to sell it? I'm going to check. So uh, card in the city, yes. It did not left. Okay, let's just uh check where it is. It is over there, no, it's not. What card is that that I've got? Oh, I'm being attacked again. It's Edana again. I think I need to assign her a few guards. Which is already the case, because I've got a few people which are actually trying to gather evidence around here. Okay, so what I should probably do is to make a forge, so we can get a bunch of armors. So let's, is there any space available here? I don't think there is so much space. Uh, let's see, craftsmen, uh, we want to make a foundry. Oh, there might be a bit of space here. Uh, do we have better space than that? Over there maybe, it's not too far, but maybe this spot is better. I think so. Good. Alright, so we'll get a forge maybe next time. I'm going to try to gather a bit of money Uh, to actually upgrade that. And we'll see if we can make a bunch of armor to protect our people. Anyway, guys, I think we are not going to go much further today. I hope you like the video. If you do, please leave a like, a comment or subscribe. And until next time, guys. Have fun.